All right. Good evening, everybody. I will call to order this meeting of the Lennox School Committee. Please note this meeting is being broadcast live on ctsbtv.org, Education Channel 1302, and will also be rebroadcast on CTSB TV. Thank you. First, we have hearing of visitors, if there are any visitors. Seeing none. Correspondence. We do have correspondence this week, very exciting. We received communication from Lea Mansbach concerning Morris After-School Expansion, which I believe all of the committee members have received. And I think it is certainly something that we will look into and try to learn some more about. It just came in this afternoon.
I would be happy to volunteer if you need a school committee liaison, just because I'm very familiar with the needs of the after-school program. And I'd be happy to support whatever, you know, works for not only the kids and their families that are in need, but also to not impact the existing community center program. So I feel like I could bring something to the table if you're looking for a liaison for that.
I would love that.
That's terrific.
Sounds great.
Well, thank you to Ms. Mansbach for writing to us. And it is on our list, and we will follow up with her and with that topic. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Board report. We have the school committee meeting minutes of March 10th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March 10th, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, because I wasn't here.
And then we have the strategic plan review discussion. We had earmarked at this point, having gone through in the various meetings, all of the different topics that are in the strategic plan. Just an opportunity to look at where we are and see what, if anything, we want to do with it. I guess I thought it would be useful to run briefly through what I think we've talked about, and based on that, what seems likely to be elements of a next strategic plan. And then we should just discuss briefly, first of all, folks have other things they want to add or amend from that. But then if we want to proceed with trying to sort of put something together over the next couple of meetings, or we could also decide we've sort of done the diligence and the incoming committee at a summer retreat or something like that would take the next step. In terms of what we've talked about, and do jump in if you feel like I've missed anything, the five areas were, first of all, teachers, staff, HR, curriculum and instruction, technology, operations and facilities, and finance. On HR, we've actually, I think, done a lot. There's a lot in process. Based on these conversations, one is a number of provisions in the new teacher contract that will be particularly supportive of newer teachers coming into the pipeline. We have the full mentorship program that we heard about last time. And we have the increased investment in professional development and really building out our own program there. So I think, you know, those three things would all be ones to focus on and push forward with. But I don't know that we would have anything else that sort of hasn't started yet that we would say needed to.
Great. Before you continue, I don't know what I missed, because you said five, and I wrote down four because I was writing so fast.
Uh-oh.
I just forget. What was it's... So I've got teacher, staff, HR, curriculum and instruction, operation and facilities, finance.
Oh, technology was...
Technology. Okay. That's just before you go on. I just want to make sure and see what I missed.
Yep, thank you. Curriculum and instruction, again, we have things we've just initiated with our CIA director, the ongoing focus on updating and aligning curriculum. We have on the student services side, the MTSS and improvement of the structure of the department. The one other piece that is entirely on me that we've made no progress on whatsoever was the LPS specialty concept. And so that was one piece that we'll need to roll forward, but could certainly be part of a strategic plan in that respect.
Refresh me on specialty.
That was just the idea of choosing a particular area that we wanted to sort of make an extra investment on being something Lennox particularly excelled in.
Yeah.
Technology, I think there's been both discussion of existing uses of technology and how we use it, and then Randy also presented us on adoption of AI. That is probably one that we will not be able to answer at this moment, but that a strategic plan would potentially say, over the next five-year period, we are going to need to develop on some timeline a clear approach to it, I would think. Unless someone knows where AI is going and can write that now, that would be fine, too.
Ask AI.
Melissa volunteered.
To ask AI for us.
Let the record show Melissa has volunteered.
She said, "Ask AI where AI..."
Operations and facilities, we of course have the new building project ongoing, and that will be the main thing for the coming period. We have the maintenance coordinator that is, I think, really improving our upkeep of the building. And then we have the capex discussion that started at the last meeting, and we probably will need to spend a little bit more time on, looking forward, especially as it interacts with a new building plan. And then on finance, I think we have the one thing that we just talked about last time and will pick up today regarding stabilization fund. The one other thing that has sort of come to mind for me that we haven't talked about, but strikes me, keeps sort of coming up in these conversations, is just the question of what our sort of goal for the trajectory of the budget is. I think there had historically been in people's mind the sort of 3% number, 3.5%. When inflation was 8% or 9%, that obviously did not make any sense. But conversely, we should not now get anchored on 7% or 8% as a standard going forward. And so somewhat like we've done in the past with school choice, it seemed to me it might be worth us just saying, you know, here is, and it doesn't have to be a fixed number, it can be inflation plus one, or something that just indicates what we mean when we say responsible stewardship. And I think also perhaps that distinguishes, as you've done in the budget, between the level of service and the investment, that is.
Right.
That we understand we need to keep level of service within reasonable cost constraints. New investments are new investments and can be assessed on their merits by the committee and then by the community. So that was just a thought. We would have more discussion about it, but that seemed to be the one thing. I don't know if anything else from the subcommittee side that might be useful as we go through our annual process.
I mean, just as you had said, it has come up in several conversations before. And yes, inflation has run rampant in the past couple of years. And I want to again say thank you to Melissa and the team for all their hard work for really keeping us on track to the level that we have been and being able to do so in a manner where we don't have to be thinking about drastic cuts or anything of that matter. Thanks again.
The only thing I... Sorry, will you finish? I'm sorry, Mike.
Yes.
The only thing I would add is sometimes, you know, more in the summer retreat or the strategic planning thinking is the idea of having some of an... We've made some additions, very strategically, I think, to staffing to meet specific needs. And I think, thank you again, echoing what Michael's saying about, you know, being very strategic about careful ways of moving staffing in a way that really reflects that we were understaffed in certain areas when it comes to actually meeting the needs of all students. So sometimes it would be even like to have more of that open conversation, perhaps at retreat, around, okay, if there were no restraints on money, what would that look like? So you can just kind of think about that, not that that means you're actually going to spend money you don't have, but I think it's important to say, if we were reorganizing this school to meet the needs of our students, what would that look like? And how do we then backtrack and think about it? Because sometimes we do move forward positions that we've always had, because we've always had them, and then we've added some positions. And so I don't know where that fits in. I certainly don't want to take over the management of the district in a way that doesn't belong to the school committee. But strategically thinking, I think it's important to sort of have that conversation. We've had some conversation about preschool education. We've had some conversation about, you know, we've done some work on the issues of students who don't see themselves as going to a traditional four-year college. But if we, instead of having it very in the lane, did a little bit of this more open thinking and then backtrack that, I just think every now and then, it's a good exercise, right? Because sometimes we do have... I know, for an example, there's a lot of new initiatives in the career support, and I'll just do the shout out there. I know Ms. Nick Neeson, I know she's not doing it completely on her own, but really doing some pretty creative, interesting things that hadn't been done before, because we had an opportunity and she had some ideas. So something along those lines, maybe we could include that. I don't know if that necessarily from that might come up with an initiative that would engage over five years, the way some of the new things have, and that might include changing the way some departments work. I don't know. I think it's helpful to do that without negating the conversation of, here's what it means to be fiscally responsible. It's just kind of rethinking. I mean, we're not going to stop teaching math and English, right? But like, how we do things might be a conversation.
But I think your suggestion is fiscally responsible. It is. I mean, before we go into that budget process and see what we have and what, you know, what we've always done and what we need to do. So I think that is part of being fiscally responsible.
Yeah. No, I think it's a great idea. And it also underscores, you know, we are now midway through a bunch of multi-year plans on the administration side, on the student services side. That would allow us to discuss what is the next set of multi-year plans that are things that, if they are priorities, we can phase in and have some visibility. So thank you.
And then one topic I didn't hear, not that it wasn't embedded in something else, because I think there are some interelips, is the concept, and I know we have been working on it, of culture and school culture. And how are we supporting student voice? We have some things we're working on. I myself am responsible for. And how are we actually fostering a truly inclusive and engaged community? At times, we had the separate committee that was culture and curriculum and teaching. It felt too much, but where does the needs to figure out what our strategic goals are relative to culture? Culture and community engagement for our students or student growth, however we want to look at that. I think there's a lot of great stuff happening, but I think that would be worth digging into, too. What's working, what's not. I think it's always a conversation, but some things might require a more strategic plan for that.
Yeah. No, I agree. Culture and community is a nice heading.
Or did you say it and I missed it?
No, 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 I didn't. No.
Okay, good.
I wasn't complimenting my own heading.
No, it just was like, I'm... Yeah, okay.
Okay. In terms of next steps, I guess my suggestion would be that I can take this and put some more notes within it so that we have a good summary of what we've discussed so far, and then we plan to make it a major topic for a retreat in terms of fleshing it out and deciding what we want a document to look like going forward, if that makes sense to everybody.
Yeah, it might be that there's two different meetings with an agenda, because that sort of, if we had no constraints, what would be due is a different process than a, let's take a look at these numbers, something like that.
No, that's right. And then I think aim to have it for the fall be something that then... I think that is the timeline on which our current strategic plan will have expired, and we will be without strategy unless we have to be.
I think that's great. And I want to say thank you, Warren, because I think that the how are we taking the plan that we did and moving it forward felt very clunky. And we were part of that process when it was created, and I think you've really streamlined it and given us an opportunity within our meetings to address things very particularly, as well as all the work that has been happening. And I think, yeah, you've approached it in a way that has been very efficient.
Great. Thank you. If no one has anything else there, we will move on to the dramatic central item on today's meeting, the public hearing. Yes.
Sorry if it...
No, we just move on to the public hearing, please.
If it pleases the chair. As soon as you went to air Dr. Ames' pantomime, I mean it, that Dr. Weaver is here for the humanities field trip and is under a time constraint. Would it be possible to have him?
Yes, absolutely. Let's move up to six B humanities field trip request.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So I'm Weaver. Many of you know me. I teach the humanities course with my colleague, Dr. Peter Strenko, in the senior year. If you're not familiar with our field trip, our very, I would say, very well-supported field trip program in the high school. We have the 10th grade going to Washington DC, very successful trip this year. The 11th grade went to New York City in the fall. And we go, the humanities course goes, in the 12th grade to New York City usually every May, last week of classes, after AP is finished for most students. So it's kind of in the schedule at a good spot. The trip has several components. It's the Museum of Modern Art, because we're doing modern and contemporary art at the time in the course. We usually see a contemporary play, usually ideally something that's new. We're going to see, we hope, a play called Maybe Happy Ending, which is about kind of post-human love. We'll just put it that way. It may involve people who are kind of human and in love. So we'll see. It's gotten rave reviews. And the third component, usually if the weather is nice enough, Dr. Strenko has been doing contemporary architecture, so he does an architectural tour with students, and we end up having a pizza dinner very nearby. All of this is sort of in midtown Manhattan, pretty centrally located. So the school very graciously covers museum admission at Mass Museum of Modern Art and the theater tickets, which usually if we plan well ahead can be got at quite a discount. We've done that again this year. Students are responsible for their own lunch and for they pay for the dinner at the all-you-can-eat pizza restaurant, so it pleases everyone. We usually, it's our intention to bring the two guidance counselors, who've worked with many of these students quite diligently all year. Ms. Romeo usually attend with us. So it's a way to celebrate the seniors. We usually say a few things at our dinner without celebrating them sort of taking their next sort of steps academically. The trip has an academic component. They're not happy to hear this, but most seniors, if you know, do well in Massachusetts, can place out of a senior final exam, but this is part of their senior exam for the course. So they have to do a final exam that involves, one component of the exam is to remark on something critically that they've seen either at the museum or the theater production. We haven't had someone do the architectural walking tour, but you know, it's there as an option if we're interested in commenting on architecture. So just really thankful for your support of these trips. I think they mean quite a bit to the students. I think it prepares them very well for especially their college in the future. This will be the 10th year I've done this humanities trip, so really a highlight of the year. So looking forward to it. Any questions about, I have some numbers about the cost or things like that if you're interested?
Steve? I think I just missed this, but if it has about 34 students going, and so what share of the senior class does versus doesn't go?
I think it's about a little over half, sort of something around like 2/3. This year is a somewhat smaller enrollment. Usually we bring about 40 to 45.
And so it's any of the senior students who have enrolled in this?
Who've enrolled in that class, exactly. Right.
Well, I'm happy to move to approve the field trip, the humanities field trip as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for your great work with our students. And many of them, and we'll poll them at some point, say, "I learned how to write a college paper from my humanities class, and it's super important." That's been said in my house, so. Thank you.
Thank you for arranging. All right. Well, you've really stepped on my dramatic segue to the public hearing, but we will nevertheless now move on to the public hearing. Beginning with school building update, I think before we go into the operating budget, it'd be good, we just should make sure we understand what else may be on the warrant that will be asked of the town.
Yep. So to the best of my knowledge, I'm pretty sure that Bob Vaughn has already gone to Jay and talked about getting the warrant on. Bob actually has been out of town for the past week and a half or so, so I haven't gotten any updates from him on that. But as far as I know, it is on the warrant. It will be moving forward, and we will be asking the town to consider, you know, making funds available for the movement ahead on the school building process as we move through with the MASC proposals.
And so the segment of spending that may be asked for here is the... I mean, it's obviously not building anything at this point. It's the...
This would be feasibility study. And then we're also going to be going ahead and asking for architecture design and the owners' project managers to be able to move forward with the project. I believe that comes to, do you have the exact?
Well, while Bob was away, I did meet with Jay and Neil, the chair of the select board. And we are looking to have a drastic reduction in that. Not putting our foot on the brake, but letting off the gas a little bit and going more with the MSBA's timeline to make sure that the town has the resources to move forward. That exact number, we've, what we're right now trying to find out from MSBA is will they allow two separate votes during our eligibility period? Or does it have to be one vote? If it can be two, it would be a pretty small ask at this town. And then there'd be a subsequent one in the fall. We don't know yet whether they will allow it to be two. The language doesn't appear to prohibit it, but we don't want to proceed and then find out that it does.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I have to kind of claim ignorance to this whole process. So the architectural design, that's different from what we already have in front of us, like all the renderings that we see. And did the town pay for what we have already in place? Or is this architectural design going to be different than what we're already looking at?
No, it's a great question.
Thank you.
So we really don't have any design work to speak of yet. You've seen some different renderings of potential thoughts, but what they've done is a feasibility study. And of that, they presented proposals of what we might potentially be looking on and projected cost for moving ahead with such a project. But I would also say we are going to be having more outreach to the community and allowing people to come and attend one of our sessions that is going to be learning more about the school building project. I believe the next one is coming up this Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes, right here.
Yeah. And anybody who has any questions, you know, feel free to come on by.
And there's one more in April, right?
One more in April. And I think we're also going to be taking up a suggestion that you had made during a finance subcommittee meeting, and also looking to get one on the books for the community center so that we could...
We do have that book.
Oh, we do have that book?
Good. Good. Good, good.
Yeah, we all thought that was a great idea. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, Michael. Okay, so the architectural design, the feasibility study, which I think both of them already took place before, correct?
A feasibility did, yes.
A feasibility did, not the design. So part of the feasibility, these renderings came out of, is that correct? And did the town forth money for that as well? Okay, so that was last year's town?
That was last year's. So one of the things that...
So what we're looking for differently now is something more substantial?
Um, kind of. The way that it worked out was at the time...
I could ask, and I don't know how to explain it.
Yeah.
I sent town the meetings.
So when we went forward with it originally, we didn't have any reason to believe that, you know, the MASP was going to be picking us up to move us through the process with them. In fact, that we were all pretty confident that it would take about 15 to 20 years before we would be accepted, because our schools are actually in very good condition compared to a lot of other ones across the state. That being said, we made an assumption, and you know what happens when you assume.
I do.
And then what happened after that was, we had gone through, we had started our own feasibility study and gotten the project role. And then it was last December?
Correct.
December 10th, December 13th, somewhere in that neighborhood. That's when we were notified by the state that we were being brought into the project. Part of the requirements, because the state has a little bit persnickety about their process that we must follow, is they're asking for another feasibility study that goes above and beyond what we've already done.
So that's the answer. So the state is now requiring another feasibility study?
Correct.
That's the answer. I want to have to be able to articulate that.
Yeah, and a couple of pieces that the state won't let us just do what we would like. They have to do one that is about a new building and one that is about renovating this building, and then one that's about the addition that we've done. So they need to have three of those. And the money that is appropriated would be spent over the course of a year. So if all the money was appropriated at this town meeting, it would be a year before, it would be a year of spending that money before there'd be another ask.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
The bill would be, like a solid design, like 80% design, I think.
With specs, like that you can go to contract and bid.
Right.
That's couldn't do from what we generated earlier. That was much more conceptual. Really big round swags.
Yep.
But for the MSBA purpose, we need to be able to get to a hard number with the contractor.
Okay.
Well said. Thank you.
And did we already, in the first feasibility, do some... I know that there's additional like ground testing and checking, but some... I thought we did some, they did some general testing to say, as far as we can tell, the grounds, you know, rock, that we can do this.
Right. They did, they looked at deeds going back generations to make sure that the property was clear. They did soil testing, they did wetland perimeters. They did a lot of that stuff.
So that will be incorporated into the next phase, too. So it's not just, it's not totally duplicative, right? It's sort of...
We're not throwing away what we did before. We're just going to add on to it and make it better.
And it's a state requirement?
Yeah.
That's my question. Did we already do a feasibility study?
Yeah, we did way up here.
We did.
And now we're going to try to come to a more macro level with it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And so to your point about potentially splitting it, if we were to split it, this request would be essentially just the next feasibility study and then...
This would be the OPM, the owners' project manager piece of it? And that would be the person that would help us decide who was going to do those other pieces, and they really guide you through the process. If we're not allowed to do it, then it would all be appropriated at once. It would still be the same timeline with the OPM helping determine who that was and then that person be brought on. But the funds would be sitting there for it versus the funds for the OPM and then a separate set of funds later for what the OPM determined.
Right. And so if the state requires us to appropriate it all once we will, in terms of when it actually hits town spending, it will be pushed further out?
And the other piece to recognize is that we do get the reimbursement as we go. It isn't the reimbursement once everything is finished. And right now, it's at 44.89%. They will change that up or down once they have the second feasibility. But right now, that is what we anticipate we would get back for the OPM. So whatever we spend out, we expect to get back about 45%.
Okay. And so we're appropriate, what we're appropriating is pre-reimbursement?
We have to appropriate the whole thing. It has to be the town's expenditure, and then you get reimbursed. You can't back out the reimbursement.
So when we, if we're asking the town for a million dollars, in theory, at the end of the day, our cost is only $550,000.
Correct.
But we...
Correct.
Okay.
Hmm?
In theory.
Well, it's going to be something between, something between, right? So if they 30...
Right. It could change the percent.
25% to 44%.
And they've said to us that our percentage would change once they had the new feasibility study. Then they would know what our project was and would adjust up or down. But that first OPM piece, there shouldn't be any adjustment because they won't have the feasibility study. So that reimbursement should be pretty set at what they told us, the radius.
That's helpful.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The FY26 proposed budget.
That was just such a...
Do you want us to, you want some trumpet song and dance?
Now that we've completed the preliminaries of not in bold school building update, we will move on to the bolded, Melissa Valkowski presents FY26 proposed budget.
Melissa, do you have new pictures?
Yes. So you'll see, you notice some design changes, but the numbers are all the same. So the updated budget, here's our timeline. And we've gone through everything except... So, the operating budget, here's our timeline, and we've gone through everything except the end of March, which is where we are right now, formal approval of the school department budget by the school committee. And then in May, we move to the end of town meeting, where the town, the town residents have a, have a time to vote for the budget. So getting right into it, gross operating budget, and the gross operating budget is, again, operating expenses without benefits and before application of revenues. So the first column is broken out by program, programmatic area. The first column is FY twenty-five approved budget, and that was approved at fifteen point five oh seven. Thank you. Don't move. Thanks. And the twenty-six initial budget, where we came in at sixteen point four six six. Now we're at the proposed budget, which we are at sixteen two nine three eight eight six. Now you notice from the initial to the proposed, you're seeing some increases in the department lines. That's because we were in process of negotiating contracts, and we have just about completed those for the most part. And so a lot of what was in the reserve or contingency fund has been moved into the instructional lines in all of the program areas. So that's why you're seeing increases in those areas, and that would include all of our professional Unit A staff, the certified staff in both buildings, and the custodial unit in operations and maintenance. So you see the reserve line is at one thirty-five, and it was at seven seventy-eight for the initial budget.
This, I mentioned to, I meant to mention this during the board report, but just to update the group, we have now completed negotiations with Unit A, with Unit D, and for the new superintendent's contract, all in line with, with what we discussed in the executive sessions, and with, I think, great feelings and cooperation on all sides. So we'll have the text of all of that for you to review, and then you would ratify at our next meeting, but the estimates based on it are now all in the budget.
So that brings, uh, brings us to a variance of seven hundred eighty-five thousand, almost seven eighty-six from twenty twenty-five, and that's five point oh seven percent. Now, after we get to this number, we then apply the revenues that the school department maintains and can control. So we're projecting to apply two point five five one million in revenue applications to offset the gross operating number of sixteen. So once that's applied, we get to a number of thirteen seven forty-one nine forty-one, which is four point one nine percent over last year's net operating budget, which is, as you had said, or it's the inflation plus one, really. But that's the numbers that we can control. And after this, then we'll add in the benefits, and then it increases a bit because, you know, that's a higher number, a higher increase all around. So the number, the thirteen point seven four one, is the school committee vote number. That's the gross operating after revenue applications. So the proposed operating budget, then we take the thirteen point seven four one number, which is operating minus revenues. We add the insurance costs in of four million ninety-seven thousand to make the total proposed budget at this point seventeen eight thirty-nine. We asked the town for an application of free cash, and we asked for, last year we had discussed a three hundred thousand, which the town appropriated. We discussed going in for less this year with them, and we requested the one hundred and fifty thousand. So that brought the appropriation request, which is a number that goes to the taxpayers on the town warrant, to seventeen six eighty-nine three fifty-eight, which is an increase year over year of the appropriation request of one point one three three million, which is six point eight five percent. Now, when we started the process, we were at nine point one five percent, and as we moved through, we were able to whittle, tweak, negotiate contracts, and we're at six point eight five now. So what makes up that one point one three three million? Thirty-eight percent of that number is the benefits increase, sixteen percent increase in active, which are employees, health insurances, and nineteen percent for retiree medex plans. Now that nineteen percent for the medex plan will be in effect until December thirty-first. There's an, that's a calendar year program, so January one through June, I've estimated an additional ten percent. Estimate, I think we'll see an increase, hopefully it's not that high. So that's in this budget and included in this increase of four thirty-one. Level service, which is after our increased application of revenues, all contractual utilities, special education expenses, supplies, things that we need every day to run the district. The increase there is three hundred forty-three thousand seven seventy. Adding to the one point one million is that we requested less free cash. So that's a hundred and fifty thousand, which is the difference between last year and this year. New initiatives, the grant rider halftime point five oh, and an ELA interventionist at the middle school to match the, the setup of the math department. So those total one twenty-three six twenty-one. And then program enhancements, professional development, you'll recall that we are doing the week of Thanksgiving as a professional development week, and tailoring it to the district and the specific needs of our teachers and our students. So we want to continue that, so there's a little bit of funding in there for that. There's new software initiatives, artificial intelligence on the technology side, and panorama on the curriculum and instruction assessment side. And the field trip, we talked about the middle school, uh, field trip to
Nature's Classroom.
Thank you, Nature's Classroom. And so that increased was twenty thousand of the eighty-five thousand, twenty thousand one hundred of it. So that's the breakdown of where that increase is going.
Melissa, I'm sorry, I'm not quite following what you're showing here. You're saying that the benefits are increasing thirty-eight percent?
Oh, I'm sorry, no. The benefits are thirty-eight percent of the increased number.
Okay, that proportion of the overall
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yep, now it's making more sense.
Yes, and so then the level service is thirty percent, and so on.
Got it.
So the proposed budget, operating benefit costs twenty point three. We apply revenues, we apply town free cash, and then we end up at our appropriation request of seventeen million six eighty-nine three fifty-eight. That's what is voted on at the town meeting, that's what will be in the warrant, provided it's approved here. Once the, the year, the state budget is developed, there's state aid that the town receives that helps to offset that seventeen million, and, but there's also an assessment that the town receives for any students, resident students that opt to go to other public schools via school choice. Besides the operating and benefits, which is the number you just saw, we also have other revenue sources that we use to help subvert the district outside of operating. So we receive federal, state, and local grants of five hundred and fifty-three thousand, and those are used for a variety, you'll see in the next couple of slides where that money goes. The food lunch program receives about four seven, four hundred and seventy-five thousand in revenue, but also we use as expenses. And the expense to run that, it's, it's self-sustaining, it's a healthy account, is probably just north of four hundred thousand each year. And athletic gate receipts are about fifty-five thousand, and that amount we use every year to pay for refs and site workers at the games and, and items like that. Typically, it's most, it's really just, at this point with fifty-five thousand coming in, the gate receipts have taken a hit because of the way that the, the conferences are set up now. We don't have a lot of local schools coming, so people are traveling further, so less people travel to the games. So gate receipts have been lower. But we do, we did receive in fifty-five, and we use that to offset those expenses for the games.
Is it just those two expenses, or does any of this go towards the stipends for the, the, you know, an athletic director, or is this an athletic director?
No.
That's totally separate?
That's operating.
All right, thanks.
So operating pays for the transportation, the stipends of the coaches and the athletic director, as well as coach training, software, supplies, that's all in the operating. And because of the lower gate receipts, we've been isolated it to, and it really has been, really all that it, it paid was for refs and, and site workers.
Okay.
And incidentals.
Okay.
Oh, and also, so that brings our total expenses for the district at twenty-one point four million, and the taxpayers will be voting on seventeen six eighty-nine. So there is a, a little swing there of, of the difference because of the revenue application and, and then the other sources that we can use to help operate the district. We also have been receiving and will continue to receive in twenty-six, a capital appropriation from the town. It'll be voted on at, provided it's voted on at town meeting, of four hundred thousand, and that's the level it's been at, really, for my experience here, except for maybe a few COVID years. But other than that, it's been a, a four hundred thousand, or thereabouts, three eighty to four hundred thousand. And a conversation with the town manager, he is planning on four hundred thousand, four twenty-six again. And that can be used for the roofs, for, um, a lot of the needs in the building aside from the core project.
Yeah. Melissa, just one question on the CapEx. I was thinking about our last conversation, and at the last meeting, and the challenges of just the size of the roof project, is it, it concerns me that if we decide to do the whole roof project, we're basically then having to defer almost everything else. Is it worth thinking about, essentially trying to say that the next two years are going to be like five hundred and then three hundred, or something like that, so that the total outlay to the town is the same, but we're not pushing, we're not doing just roof this year and then trying to catch up on everything the following year?
So we, um, this is a number that is developed on the town side.
Yeah.
I'm sure if, if we had a conversation and we're able to give some input, it would be reviewed and see if it can happen. I think that this number is pretty much set for all departments. You know, the school department gets it, the police department, and so on, so, but I can certainly look at that. My plan for some of the smaller items is to try to get them done with this year's capital. We have a project that's coming up at the end of the year that will be using a lot of what's remaining, but I think the technology portion for the renewal cycle and then some of the smaller, I might be able to squeeze in in this year. And then we can regroup and see what's left, get a formal bid on the roof, and doing the sections that have to be done so that we're not, that the building's not paying the price for the roof. And once then we get past the MSBA and into the core, and we know what we're doing there, if we're adding a full roof, if we're not adding the roof, then I think we regroup again and plan the next steps.
Okay.
I'm not good at remembering numbers.
So the federal grants, we received four hundred ninety-one thousand in these grants, and they're entitlement grants for the most part. There's a few that, that show up, like the five thousand at the bottom, in the early childhood, but the top four, which are the most money, are entitlement grants. So provided that we, we apply for them, we provide the appropriate paperwork and evidence that the state is looking for, we receive the grants. So we've been doing that for years, and those, I believe, will continue. And I think if anything out of this list may go away is the five thousand for the IEP program, which we've received two years in a row, and we're pretty close to having it implemented and professional development done. So I think we'll be okay without that. But the, these are the federal grants that we receive, and the early childhood is a federal grant, not entitlement, but we tend to get it every year as well. State and local grants, career pathways is the big one here, and that's here at LMMHS, and the guidance department has spearheaded this effort, and they do a lot of work with department chairs, and Heather McNeese, as you had said, is a big part of it, where they work with the kids to give them other avenues to look at, to see if this is the way that they want to go. We have sent students to the medical assisting program, a real estate course, and some health courses. So it's, it's often running at this point. I think, you know, it'll still be growing and being adjusted, but there is a lot of, I think, enthusiasm and participation. The mass fresh grant, which is the one where we wanted to bring, we apply, we apply for for farm-to-table, local farm-to-table, has, is no longer available. So that is, we're not getting that this year, so hopefully we'll keep looking, see if something else comes up that we can apply for to help with that.
A grant we're able to do that?
Yes. Berkshire Workforce and LEAF are small, local grants that the Berkshire Workforce is also career-oriented, and run through the guidance, who help to direct kid, students to where they are interested in and give them exposure, and see if it's something that they really want to move forward with. The Lennox, the LEAF grant, the Education enrichment fund, is usually about this number, five to six thousand a year. Teachers apply for the most part. They get small buckets of money for a project that they want to do, and some of those projects are listed there, and it's here in this school as well as Morris. And then we have been talking about the stabilization fund. We currently have two hundred and fifty thousand in that fund. The dates up here in green are the dates that the money was appropriated and put into the account, and it's currently capped. The, the vote was capped at two hundred and fifty. We can only keep two percent of our net school spending in that fund total, which would be about three hundred and nineteen thousand, so a variance of sixty-five to sixty-nine And we can use this for any expense that is unbudgeted, that occurs during the course of a year, with school committee approval and select board approval.
So we could use this if any of the federal funding went away? You know, we could use this towards
Yes, so one of the grants, which is a special IDEA grant.
IDEA, yeah.
We use that for, a portion of it, we set aside for tuition expenses. I believe this year, the twenty-sixth grant has forty thousand in there. So if next year, the grant goes away, we would be able to move, request some of this funding, because we don't have it budgeted in the operating.
Right.
Or if we Or if we had a development, new student move in, another student may need additional services, that's all unbudgeted, that would be when we could ask to use it.
If the funding went away, okay.
And that's it.
You're welcome.
Bill told, Dr. Collins told me to put a picture of my dog here to make you happy. I did, but then I took it out.
Can I ask for a little favor?
Sure.
Can you go back for a second, so I just want to double check some numbers, to the chart, which would be the specific one where you said this is what we'll be asking for for town meeting if it's what we approve tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So that number, if we were looking at our proposed motion, I just think we're kind of off on numbers, so I just want to double check, would be 17,689, or wait, let's see, I can't, 68?
358.
689,358.
Do you have a printed copy of the motion?
Yes, I think that somehow the one I got, and maybe I don't know if everybody else got, doesn't, doesn't have, has updated dates but not numbers.
Well, so I'm just, because the one online has all what I think are the correct numbers excluding benefits, so it, the.
Yes.
Because I think you're.
If I understand Melissa, what you're saying, at the end of the day, this is the amount the town has to approve, but because benefits comes in separately, what we move here to place on the warrant is X benefits.
Yes, yes, when you.
So that's the part three is the, so where is that on there? That's what I'm trying to.
There is an accurate, accurate vote.
If you just, if you go up one slide, Melissa.
The 13,741, that, just the, okay.
Yeah, so this is the gross operating.
Yeah, got it.
Less the revenue is the net operating. That's what we have in our motion.
So that's part three in the motion, is the 13 under part three. And part one.
Is the 16,293 at the top.
Got it, okay. That's where, because I was remembering that 17 number, but now I understand why it's, okay, got it.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So I wasn't accusing anyone of fraud, I was just like, I want to make sure where these numbers go, that they make sense, okay?
And if you look at the warrant, you could look at last year's, the benefits aren't in the school department expenditure line. That's why you're not voting on that. It's in a different part of the warrant.
Yes, okay, thank you for that clarification, because I was like, wait, I'm really confused, because I was remembering the 17 number in my head.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Melissa, thank you for this. All the years I've been doing this, this is one of the best ones I've ever seen. So thank you very much.
I think you told me to.
Andrew, it gets, it gets creative every time, too. It's very visually pleasing.
Yeah, no, I agree. The stepping through the different levels and then at the end also seeing, okay, here are all of the elements of the increase is, I think, very clear and exactly what we can now share to the town, and I think underscores the incredible work you and the whole team have done to put this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to propose a motion.
Oh, you can't, yeah.
Oh, I can't.
First, we have the hearing, in case there's any public comment or questions related to the budget. Seeing none.
Do you have to actually say we are now in the hearing or?
I announced that, yeah, I think we did that several times. All right, now, if anyone wanted to make a motion.
I'd like to promote, to propose a motion. Part one, to approve a gross operating budget in the amount of 16,293,886 dollars for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30, 2026. Part two, to approve the application of 2,551,972 dollars in revenue toward the reduction of the fiscal year 2026 gross budget from the following sources. Number one, school choice receipts of 2,45,000 dollars. Number two, non-choice tuition receipts of 170,000 dollars. Number three, theater receipts of 16,000 dollars. Number four, preschool receipts of 80,000 dollars. Number five, special education circuit breaker receipts of 212,972 dollars. Number six, building use receipts of 13,000 dollars. Number eight, miscellaneous receipts, 15,000 dollars. Part three, to see if the town of Lenox will vote to raise and appropriate the net sum of 13,741,914 dollars for the school department fiscal year 2026 operating budget.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Nicely done.
And with that, we move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, highlights and recognitions. The sixth grade team from LMHS came down and met with the fifth grade students. The Berkshire Theater Festival came to Morris and did a presentation of Pirate's Past Noon, and every student got a copy of the book by Mary Pope Osborne. It was pretty exciting. Yeah. The pre-K, K in first grade went to the Mahawi to see the runaway bunny, and everyone was well-behaved for some of these students, the first big field trip. Morris teachers received their books this past week to teach a social justice lesson, which has been part of the goal there. And then at LMHS, the Berkshire robotic competition saw a team place 12th place, and the Ingenuity 2B won the comeback team award because in between rounds, they made a 70-point improvement.
Oh, wow.
Pretty impressive, yeah. And Brooke Kaminsky's AP Environmental Science class project resulted in signs being used to alert drivers of amphibian crossings near vernal pools, and they worked that out with Superintendent Gop and the Highway Department.
Thank you, good work, everybody. Unfinished business, we have a return to the stabilization fund discussion. It would be ultimately up to the town manager to approve, excuse me, and place on the warrant a motion to increase the stabilization fund, but I think based on our conversations, it would make sense, if the committee so chooses, to nevertheless vote to indicate our desire to see that additional funding put aside, based, and at this point, it would really be a matter of just lifting the cap so that money could be put in. One source of that money is then leftover funds at the end of an operating year as opposed to a new appropriation from the town. So I think the proposal, as it has been discussed, would be simply a motion to ask the town to raise the cap on the stabilization fund up to the maximum 2% of net spending.
Net school spending.
Net school spending. And then the select board and town manager could take that under advisement to consider adding to the warrant for town meeting. So that's where that stands. I don't know if you have anything to, if that covers it?
Just, would we be voting to raise and appropriate and transfer as well as raise the cap on it, or are we just going to be voting to raise the cap on it?
We could do either. I mean, we can do whatever we want. My, my thought is that, given that we typically have a fairly, not large, but we do have some money at the end of most years that we could add in, that, given that this cap increase is only going to be 60 or 70,000, that's probably something we can fill over the next couple of years without a new appropriation. So I would, I would incline not to appropriate, but if others felt like that was an important thing to do this year, we certainly can. If the town had an extra 70,000, I guess I would ask them to put it toward the roof, probably.
Exactly.
I mean, I think, I like the idea of just, I didn't realize that we had the ability, like, I remember when we talked about actually putting that fund in place, or a bunch of different iterations, different ways to attack it. And so the fact that we weren't, that we had capacity to increase the ceiling, whether we funded or not, will be a decision based upon available resources. So I think it makes a lot of sense to have that there, especially in light of a lot of unclear situations ahead and making sure that we do have the ability to fund that, but to, in the meantime, not ask for it now, but by town meeting, which is before the end of the fiscal year, if there's excess funds, things that weren't used, that would be a place it could go.
And I would assume that I would have to bring some sort of transfer request from the operating budget to go into this stabilization fund, but I can do a little research on that, and that's, that's just a matter of a vote here and then at the town level, I believe.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think it needs to have a transfer at this point in time, but at least to make that request. And, you know, as most of you know, that this actually drew, was suggested to us to try and be creative with that from the finance committee, as a result of a meeting with the finance committee and saying, you know, with all the uncertainty out there, have you ever thought about, da-da-da? So that's what initiated the conversation to begin with. So I don't think necessarily we would be looking, I, you know, be looking for a transfer at this point in time.
Did you want to bring a motion up?
If someone would like to make a motion, we could.
That's what I was actually trying to suss out to get the language for. So it looks like I'd like to propose a motion to ask the town to increase the cap of the Special Education Reserve Fund to the 2% max of the net school spending allowable amount.
Second.
Can you say the very last one again, the maximum?
Allowable amount.
Allowable amount of 2%. Isn't it already at 2%, though?
No.
No, because that's at 250. We can go up to about 320, probably.
I think 319 is what Melissa said we could get to, so we're about, we're looking to see if we can increase it up another 69,000-ish, just to increase the stabilization.
So what is our, is our cap by percentage now?
These.
The law states that it is, you can only put into this fund 2% of your net school spending. And so the last net school spending we have is 24, and that was at 15.998, which is, 2% is 319 and some change. So the variance between what's already in the fund and that is about 69,000 dollars.
Okay.
Yep.
And this, this motion would allow it to move with the net?
Right. Yep, understood.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's seconding that?
All right. Well, please convey our sense of the committee to the town manager.
I'd be happy to do so. Thank you all, everyone.
All right, and last item on the agenda, new business superintendent's evaluation. I just wanted to highlight that my thinking is we should move this up and do this sooner rather than later. Typically, it has been scheduled for the end of the school year, which means a new committee comes in and is then supposed to do it, and it would make a lot more sense for the committee that has worked with the superintendent for the year to do it, I think. And so I don't imagine that we will deliberate before a new committee is in, but I think if our group takes the commitment to gather the feedback, that will be what is most valuable.
Yeah, I agree.
So I will follow up with the relevant materials, and we will proceed in that direction.
Thank you.
We should probably bring it up in front of the negotiations. Go through the contract, we've done your contract, now we're going to do your evaluation.
That's true, we could have pulled it all the way up. All right, that is everything we have, I believe.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.